Just a couple of things. Just a huge thank you to everybody involved in Steamboat Days last Wednesday through Sunday. I know a lot of city staff is involved in that event and want to thank them and the organizers, everybody that's involved in that event. It's a really big deal for the city and it's a great event and a lot of effort went into it. I love seeing it down at the levee. I hope that that worked well for them and look forward to next year. Also, just want to say congratulations to the Sarvi family on their wedding over the Congratulations. And there's an event at the History Center you should take advantage of. It's called the Art Defining Furniture. It opened last Saturday. It's free admission thanks to a Southeast Minnesota Arts Council grant and stop in open seven days a week. So, that's it. City Manager?
Want to thank Park and Rec Maintenance staff for getting Unity Park scored away for our family. We got there and got out before the rain started, so timing was good. And out front, we had our new heavy rescue truck was available. I hope the council members saw that. And if you ever want to look inside the vehicle or take a tour, I'm sure Kurt or the firefighters at Central would be happy to take you through there. So, it's an impressive piece of equipment for us. And it's nice because you don't have to worry about it catching fire like the other one. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Councilman Thurly.
Here.
Mueller.
Here.
Alexander.
Here.
Ayden.
Here.
Borzakowski.
Here.
Scholmeyer.
Here.
Under the Petitions Request and Communications, the first item is Item 3.1 Liquor License Renewals for 2018. I would note, we do have some outstanding issues. We have four applicants that need to supply a proof of liquor liability insurance and four that need to pay off some delinquent utility bills.
Just point of clarification, you mean 2019 for the liquor license renewals, right?
Yes.
Okay. I'd move to approve their request.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Eileen. So, if these are not paid by July 1, they are not able to operate?
Correct.
Okay. All right. George?
Well, Mayor, with these liquor licenses, many of the establishments, they pay their liquor license renewal well in advance and well before the deadline. And of course, it takes, you know, the city clerk's department to do in-depth research on this to make sure that everything is good. And then, of course, then we have people that come in late or whatever it may be. I would just like to have administration just look at perhaps maybe coming up with a late fee charge. You have it on property tax, you have it on, well, just about any tax you want to mention that you have it on. Just to look at it, bring something back to council, leave it up to administration. It's not part of the motion here, but just to look at bringing something back on that because, you know, if we have latecomers, the clerk's office again has to go into in-depth research again and again before, you know, backtracking all this information. So, that's, I'd just like to see that come back to the council for approval or denial or whatever they, whatever we choose, so.
Anything else?
And that won't be until we set fees, so.
Sure, sure.
You won't see it anytime soon, but we'll bring it back.
Sure.
Okay. The vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's.
Item 3.2 is an application for an on-sale intoxicating liquor license for the Mankato Bar. And Julie Bartholme has applied for that license and she is present if you have questions.
I would move to approve the license.
Motion by George. Is there a second? Michelle. Any discussion? Paul, George?
Does Julie want to say anything or? Okay. We don't want you to be mad that you came down here and nobody let you talk, so. Good luck.
All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Carrie's.
Item 3.3 is a request to close West King Street for the King Street Block Party on Saturday, July 20.
Make a motion to approve that request.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Paul. Discussion? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's.
Item 3.4 is the Chatfield Street closure request for Saturday, June 22.
Make a motion to approve that request.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Eileen. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Item 3.5 is a request by Winona State for street closures for their move-in date.
Make a motion to approve that request.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Al. Any discussion? Got to give a one.
The seconds are really flying.
Yeah.
We had our coffee before we came, George.
All right. I think we're ready to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's.
Item 3.6 is a license agreement and a temporary liquor license for the Winona Area Humane Society for a Levy Mania Wrestling Event.
Make a motion to approve that request.
Second.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by George. Anybody wish to speak to this? Really? Chance to promote it a little bit.
I have a question, Paul. So, I have a question.
Sure.
Is this family-friendly?
Absolutely.
Okay, because a parent mentioned to me that they took their child to an event at the Rochester Center and then there was lots of swearing. And I said, well, I don't think, but I'll ask.
Different, actually, Eric, if you would want to say your pitch on this. This is Derek Martini from Riverside Championship Wrestling.
As you said, Derek Martini, Riverside Championship Wrestling. We've been running shows on the Lacrosse American Legion for just under five years now. Absolutely family-friendly. No blood, no swearing.
Great.
We pride it on it, absolutely.
Thank you.
You put on the show at the Island City Brewing, too. And I went to that. It was definitely family-friendly. It's a hoot. It's really a lot of fun. You got the good guys, you got the bad guys, you got the little kids up there punching the bad guys. I mean, it's really fun.
Very much proud of you. We're really looking forward to giving you guys a good impression, raising some money for Humane Society.
I heard there might be a battle royale, is that right?
Be there, yep.
Is there an age limit?
On the wrestling or? It's part of judges' requirements. Can we pay to have him wrestle?
Oh, Al?
What about a rain date or what happens if in climate weather, you know, you're outside and all of that?
Patrick and I are working with a plan for that, so if something happens, we'll have something in.
Sounds like a good event. Hate to see it, you know, be canceled.
Absolutely. So, anyone that's interested, it's going to be on July 13 at the levee. And, yeah, we've got some former WWE superstars going to be there, the Honky Tonk Man is going to be there, Kenny Anderson is going to be there, Erwin Mulligan, the Baron.
Yes.
All very impressive. So, please come on out and support us. It's all about the way society.
Yeah. All right. Well, sounds great. Thanks for doing that.
Excuse me, I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Pam.
Yeah, I have a question. I was looking at the diagram of how you were going to lay out the levee. Are those bleachers that you're going to have?
It's going to be seats.
Seats.
It'll be seated, yes. So, we'll give round two chairs for the event.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I think we're ready to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Oops. Definitely passed.
We'll let them ring the bell.
Item 3.7 is a request for the Winona Swim Club Event on Friday, July 19 through Monday, the 22nd.
Make a motion to approve that license agreement.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Eileen. Paul?
Yeah, so this says USA Swim Meet. So, I'm just wondering, how far are people coming to participate, coming to participate?
Mayor and Council, the USA Swim Meet draws participants from all across the state. So, it's a large meet. They're expecting somewhere around 500 participants to come in. So, it's a big deal. It fills the hotels and definitely it's a good use of the pool for that time.
And they're just, they just need this outdoor pool? They're not using any of the indoor?
Correct. It's all done at the outdoor pool. And it's unique to the state because of the length of the pool, the Olympic-sized pool that we have. So, it's between here and a few indoor pools in Minneapolis. So, I mean, this is, this is one that they want to keep on their schedule, so.
Okay, thank you.
They've been doing this ever since the aquatic center opened, I think.
Yeah, they didn't do it last year because there was a U of M meet that took precedence over theirs. But you're correct, other than last year, they've been there every single year.
All right. Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's.
Item 3.8 is the Live at the Levee Event for July 4.
Make a motion to approve the request for the Live at the Levee Event.
I'd second that.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Pam. Michelle?
Thanks for doing something on July 4.
Happy to.
Awesome.
Yay. Spread the word.
Oh, I will. Thank you.
I just, it says here, allow the closure of the Lower Levee Park Plaza Johnson Street. Is that right?
Oh, no, it's Main Street.
That's what I thought. Okay. Correction. All right. Anything else? Paul?
I'm assuming we'll have food vendors and beverage vendors as with the pass Live at the Levee?
We can hear you, Lee, but people at home might not.
Yes, I understand. Mayor and Council, yes, there'll be food vendors and beverage vendors at the event.
Super. It'll be great. Thanks.
Anything else? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's.
Item 3.9 is the Bruski Drive Closure Request for the Bow Fishing Tournament on Saturday, June 29.
Make a motion to approve this request.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by George. Questions or concerns? George?
Yeah, if Patrick could just explain this. I know this issue came to us at the Port Authority where Councilman Thurly and myself, we supported this for this bowfishing. And it's quite interesting, but if you could explain the street closure and what's all going to be taking place in that area?
Sure, yes. Mayor and Council, the request to close Bruski Drive area is because of the size and scope of this event. So, they're expecting upwards of 90 participants, 90 teams, or 94-person teams. And they're going to need that amount of roadway for trucks, trailers, and boats. So, they'll line both sides of the road and then they'll launch at 6:45 PM and then they'll all roll out together. And then they'll come back for a final weigh-in at 8:00 AM in the morning. So, it's all night long. It's night fishing is what it is. So, they're requesting the closure of that street just because of the significant amount of vehicle that they'll have.
So, live Bruski, wide of street and that's?
Mayor and Council, the reason for this is because the event, the event's using the two parcels owned by, owned by the Corps, thank you, just south of Menards and just south of Warner. So, they're going to be doing all their weigh-ins there, the tents, and they need that road closed so they can put all their vehicles there.
Will they be going in at different ramps then or will they just be using St. Charles and East End?
Once they roll out, they intend to be using pools, they're going to be using pools or have access to pools four through eight and then the Northern Edge Pool in Pool Nine that's still in the state of Minnesota. So, when they roll out, they're going to spread out and they're going to find their top spot to go.
Well, they're not just going out into 5A. They're going all the way down into.
Brisbane.
Correct, yeah. They're going all there.
They're going down to Harper's Ferry or so.
Correct. And this is labeled, and this says the World Championship Bow Fishing Tournament. That's, that's not just a clever title. They, they had to put a bid in and they earned this from Deland, Florida is where it was at last year. So, it's a significant event to be hosting here. And the event director was particularly impressed with this area because of the hotels, the restaurants, the gas station, there are supplies they can purchase right there. So, you've got, again, another large significant event that will be in our county.
Will this be televised at some point?
I don't know the answer to that.
Anything else? Okay. George?
I know I've never seen this before, but people that have fished this and have seen it, they say this is really a remarkable thing to see. If you have an opportunity to ride along and see how the fish come up and so, it's interesting. So, and I say, it's the, it's a championship, so it's the top-notch event, so, and they picked a top-notch city to have it in, so.
All right. The vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's.
Under unfinished business, item 4.1 is to award the contract for the 2019 Sidewalk Project and I distributed an updated resolution this evening.
And make a motion to designate Fowler and Hammer for $48,826 for the project this year. Is this what you handed out? The way I said Wapah Shaw? Nope, that's, that's for sure. Okay. It's a big change. Yep. Okay. It's a big change.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second it. I have a question.
All right. Go ahead, Paul.
First, this one that you handed out, well, I guess all the dates are 2018.
No, and I'm, I apologize. It should be Wapah Shaw as the low bidder. The changes that it.
The number's wrong?
It should be, it should be Wapah Shaw $36,656. The change is that the second paragraph that's entering into the contract and the amount, I don't know, it's. So, the attorney helped me. This is, you emailed a change. It's supposed to be, what's the change? It's?
The date.
The bonds?
I don't have it in front of me, so I can't go yet.
So, let me modify my, I would like to modify my.
Bonds, not bond.
Okay. So, I'd like to modify my motion then, now that I understand, to go with Wapah Shaw Construction for $36,656.25.
And I will second that.
Understanding that there's something about the bonds that are different than our.
We need, we need two bonds.
Two bonds. Okay. Okay. Sorry, I misunderstood.
Al?
I'm still confused here. I mean, we had a little bit of 36 and now we're approving a bit of 48, I guess.
No, it's, I just modified.
It's 36.
I know, but I'm wondering why we have the change before your motion.
Well, I was handed this sheet that said this was the new resolution, so I went with it. But then, for clarification, they said that wasn't what we wanted to change. I don't know.
Is that right? So.
Where did this resolution come?
This came, the city attorney asked that we change the language and I assume that what you emailed was the updated language with the amounts in it. It appears that you just sent me last year's, so I apologize. I just printed out what the city attorney sent me and I didn't update it with 2019. So, it should be Wapah Shaw, but with that language.
Okay. Okay.
All my questions are null.
Everybody's clear? All questions answered?
The change was bonds.
And then we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's?
Okay, we'll try on 4.2. Approval Application for the Airport Snow Removal and Equipment Building. And I distributed two handouts. It's a memo from TKDA and then the second page is a bid tab. And the request is to acknowledge the apparent low bid to T2 Contracting and authorize city to submit project grant funding to the FAA and MINDAT. So, we're not awarding the contract. We're submitting a grant application. If it gets approved, then we'll come back for the contract. So moved.
I'll second, okay.
All right. Moved by Michelle, seconded by Al. Any further discussion? Paul?
So, Keith, so the federal and state contributions percentage remains the same even though the bid is higher than our estimate. So, there will still be the 18% state, 72% fed, even though that's higher than our estimate?
That's correct. It'll still be the same percentages. It, truth be told, some variation can happen in the process because the bids go submitted to the state and the feds and they will go through it, so may not be exactly that, but it's, those are the posts.
One more question. Do we have experience or do you have any background or familiarity with T2?
I do not, but our consultant TKDA, who is a large firm, did look into it and have no problem with this firm.
Any other questions? If not, the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's?
And item 4.3 is the Community Solar Garden Revised Contracts.
Make a motion to execute the attached agreement.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Paul.
Can I ask a question?
Okay. Is there a question?
Paul.
Paul, okay.
Mr. Howard, just trying to update us on what happened to Solarstone in Kellogg. If you have any knowledge or why we got moved. I'm confident with everything else, but just curious about what's happening out there.
Mayor and Council, what I understand from Solarstone is their Kellogg project financing does not come through. The financier wasn't comfortable with that project, so it wasn't happening. So, it just was scratched.
Well, there is a new solar site up in Kellogg, I think, isn't there?
Yes.
Who is that?
I am not sure.
I think that's Sunshire.
Oh, okay.
I mean, I think they had a Wapah Shaw County one, so.
All right.
La Cressa one, due date of completion or when they're going to fire up?
They anticipate being online at the end of this year, probably, probably a little bit before then, just because there's not much work happening in the middle of the winter. But that's, that's the date that they've put on as our best to go forward date.
Do we have the rest of our portfolio, maybe that's what we call it, with the project up by Rollingstone or?
Most of our subscription was moved to farms, different farms on Rollingstone. So, they're, they are called like Winona County 1 and 2. And they, I am not sure on their locations, but they are ones that were approved by, by the county, so they're, they're happening. They're being, they're being built. But they're, they're not at that Rollingstone location. I believe they're out, out farther in the county, I think, around St. Charles.
Yeah, okay. All right. Thanks.
Thank you, John. Looks like we're ready to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's?
Under new, excuse me, under new business, Winona Senior Advocacy Grant Agreement.
Make a motion to execute the contract with the county.
Second that.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Pam. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's?
Item 5.2 is the Environmental Review Requirements for the Winona HRA.
Make a motion to approve.
I would second that also.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Pam. Linda, did you want to say anything?
Mayor and Council, I would just like to say that we appreciate you continuing to supervise our response to the state's environmental purposes and thank you to Lucy for completing the review. I would like to note that this year we submitted a mixed plan, which means that the approval will be good for five years and we won't get additional approval unless we should make a change in this plan.
All right, good. Michelle?
I always appreciate how thorough the reports are that you send in that are so specific down to dollar amounts that you think are going to be needed. I really, right, of course, you never know when you're dealing with people, but I appreciate the effort you put into giving us the numbers as clearly and accurately as you do.
All right, well, thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's?
Item 5.3 is the Wood and Brush Site Management Agreement.
Make a motion to approve the attached resolution.
I'll second. Motion by Michelle, seconded by Al. Discussion? George?
Yeah, can we have any changes that are in here or what we're all looking at or what we're doing or two years or?
Mayor and Council, some of the larger changes, this is two-year. Typically, the cities entered into five-year contracts. If you recall, last year, we had a one-year contract and that's because the contractor wasn't catching up the way that we wanted him to, so it was more of an incentive year. We feel that he's made good progress on reducing some of the piles and getting them ground up with a tub grinder. So, we wanted to do two years. He wanted five. We wanted one, so we ended up with two. I think that was a decent compromise. Again, we just want to make sure that, that he's following through. I think the largest change is that we're going to be closing down the Prairie Island site that the city's been operating for, for several years, I think, right, Keith? And we hope to have that shut down by mid-August and then all the material will be going to this site. We'd also like, hopefully, we can work something out with the farm at a future time and send some of the material out there as well. But they're in the process now of sort of reorganizing their, a board and we'll work with that board to try to have some programming out at the farm. We've updated a lot of the requirements that, for the city attorney, review as far as insurance and liability and things of that nature. They're also going to be taking more of our, if we have a large storm event, and then we've agreed that we would pay if there's over, I think, 10 delivery, truck deliveries in a day. And that's just to cover them as well if they get inundated with material. I think our tree crew said we've got about three more years of really heavy emerald ash bore infestation and tree removal. After that, I mean, it will continue and we've always got work that we're doing, but the, the really large amount of materials that we have, that will start to drop off in about three years' time.
Pam and then George.
Yes, I, I see here that we have, we are researching several alternative full compost facilities in the county and in two years, we'll be able to know which ones are better suited to our, our city. I would, in light of the fact that the Southeast Tech now has a sustainable agriculture department or a program, I think it would be really interesting and useful to find a way that we can use some of our trees, our waste for what's called biochar. So, that's come up, I know, several times. It's probably more new to me than it is to you, but it sounds useful, and I'd like to see our tree waste used for some positive purpose.
George?
Now, with this emerald ash bore, I know a lot of residents and some businesses ask that they would take the wood. Is that permissible to do? You know, the city would take the brush and leave them all the wood. I know that it's been done in the past. Is that something that can still be done if a resident is in the neighborhood? I mean, if a tree crew's in the neighborhood, and then, you know, they're asking, well, you know, I'll take the wood, just drop it off here.
As long as they agree to comply with the rules associated to the trees. Can't take them out of a quarantine zone, things of that nature. But maybe Chris has got some different guidance from you, Keith.
No, I thought you were saying behind me. No, it's, that's correct. We give the first option to the homeowner. If they want it, we'll leave the logs at reasonable lengths. We won't cut it all, you know, length for them, but reasonable lengths. Then we'll take the brush out of there. And we do take some to other sites that do use them. Some commercial sites have used them in the past. But, and then typically, we made some available when we had them before. Now this would be Bruce Reed would be able to do that if he wanted to. If he wants to sell it from his site, he can do that, but we won't be taking them to individual property owners.
Is burning still allowed in these compost, or our compost sites or other compost sites?
Yes, if they've been approved by the state.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, let's vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
Item 5.4 is the annexation request for E-WART.
Make a motion to approve the attached joint resolution and accept the three attachments.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, and seconded by Paul. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Item 5.5 is the plat review for the Myrie subdivision.
Make a motion to approve the attached resolution and accept the three attachments. Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Eileen. Any questions? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Item, or under committee reports, item 6.1 is the heritage preservation goal, subjective and budgeting report.
I have questions for you, if I may. Which I suspect you had a lot to do with this report. I think it's really well done, has a lot of great detail in it. I enjoyed going through it very much. I appreciate the report. I wish we could get them from all of the commissions actually once a year, something similar to this, that would lay out for us what their future endeavors might be. I would ask, though, knowing that there's a comprehensive plan coming up in the next two years, and they're heavily going to be involved in that, what do you see as the three top priorities they have for designation? Because this looks like about three years worth of work, maybe more. So I'm wondering what their three top goals are for 2019, knowing that there's already some in progress.
Assuming that the eligibility determination comes back in favor of Old City Hall, continuing that work, the work being done for Wyndham Park or potentially the broader Broadway residents, our historical district, would be very important as well. That last eligibility determination is rapidly becoming not as timely as we would like. And that work was done as part of the bridge study. And then in addition, the upcoming hundredth of the band shell does seem to be quite important. I know that the largest cost is included in that top three priorities, but that largest cost might be able to be massaged a little bit, depending on the consultants selected and any bidding in terms of score as well.
Well, I think, obviously, since the owner is so engaged at the Be No's Deli, the Old City Hall, it's a perfect building, and 100% behind doing the band shell because I know that Chad would probably like to go out for some grants, and it needs some major repair. And I know one way to get it is to have that designation, and it's certainly worth being designated. I'm not as familiar with the Broadway. I'm not, I mean, I don't know if you have more information you can send to council on this district that you're thinking about adopting, because I suspect on top of being expensive, it'll be controversial. So if you can get me some more information, I would appreciate that.
Any additional information will, of course, be supplied. If the commission does choose to make that their top priority or explore the option a little bit further, if they direct staff to come forward and approach any potential consultants, we'll be able to flesh that out completely. And it will, of course, come before city council.
Thank you. Luke?
Luke, I have a question. Since this was brought up about the band shell designation, has there been any effort to replace that plaque that was stolen from the band shell?
This is the first that I have been made aware of that, so I'm not certain.
I thought we got it back.
Did we?
I don't, I don't believe so. We put a, we put a reward out for it. And I'll have to check with Chad and see if we've made any progress with it. I don't think we have, otherwise we would have, we would have put it back on.
Well, it's been long enough now that I would think that we can find possibly a donor or somebody that would, you know, put that back. Let me, let us know if it's still...
It certainly will.
Okay, thank you.
It's still...
Just one more quick question. So is, just checking, does it look like we'll be expanding the Broadway district?
The proposed national register district came forth from the 2011 bridge study. The 2016 local district, which is just Wyndham Park, is significantly smaller. And so looking at whether or not we choose to go for just the Wyndham Park district and nominate that for the national register, which is already locally designated and therefore has protections, and then would just open up grant funding and potential tax credits for those different properties, or if we look at the broader districts, is really going to be the big question for both the consultant and for the commission to weigh in the coming months and year.
Okay. Thanks.
How much of your time is spent on the preservation commission work?
I would say it's been quite busy in the last few months. As the staff agrees on to the commission, I can say it takes up to probably around 30%, 35% on occasion.
Yeah, just one question. After our last meeting there with the peerless building and all that, and questions come up after that, a lot of people don't know or understand it all. What if I do not want my property designated historic? Or whatever terminology you use? What if I, maybe these five houses do, but I'm in the middle? I don't want to be? How does all that play out? If you do not want it to be on the local register or national register, whatever?
Dealing with the national register, if it's an individual site, the individual site does have the opportunity to reject the nomination or reject the overall process, and that's built in with the state historic preservation office. If it's an overall national historic district, it's a majority of property owners, even if they own multiple properties within that district, who do have to approve the district. If it's local, the enabling legislation and our own city ordinance does allow for a local designation to go forth without the approval of the landowner.
Okay. Any other questions? Well, vote. All those in favor, say aye. Oh, I thought there was a motion. Oh, no, actually, sorry.
And item 7.1 is council concerns.
Well, let's start with the always fashionable Michelle.
I have nothing to say. Thank you, Bill.
Eileen?
Great River Shakespeare Festival season opens next, June 25. I don't know what day it is. That's all.
Al?
Just a reminder that, speaking of the historic band shell, municipal band concerts are underway. The first one was last Wednesday, and they continue through August. Through Wednesday, 8 o'clock, the band shell will be there.
All right. Pam?
Yes, I would like to suggest that if you have not heard about or been down to the Blue Heron Cafe, there is a new art exhibit. The River Arts Alliance has put up a fantastic show of art by local artists. You will just be stunned all over again at the talent that exists in our community. It was, it was an awesome event. The opening was last Friday, and the exhibit, the show will be up through September 2nd. So make sure you get down for that. I also noticed today that the National Weather Service has proclaimed that the river now is sunk down to 9.2 feet. Congratulations and thank you to the Public Works Department that has seen us through this high water, high water period. It's been, it's been difficult for a lot of communities, but thanks to your work, not so much for us. Speaking of which, Winona's Boathouse Community has been featured today on the front page of the Star Tribune. The Boathouse Community people are also very glad to see the water drop down so we can get back to their houses. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Paul?
I just want to congratulate Scott Lindsey Sherman on a successful trinota. It was, we had good weather this year, and that everything went well, and I was happy to participate as a volunteer. Also, I think we have another bridge opening coming up.
I was going to...
So I'll let you take care of that.
Okay. After George.
Hey, thank you. I'd just like to say that I was very honored yesterday to serve as the grand marshal of the Steamboat Days Parade. It certainly was a privilege, and on behalf of myself and my family, we were very, very honored to have that designation as grand marshal, and we had a good time. So thank you. And also to the Bill Glieszky family, Bill, who passed away, I would think at our, at our last council meeting. Bill, of course, was known for his operations of the Lakeview Drive-In Restaurant, which his sons now operate, Lakeview Root Beer Stand, as we knew it for those of us that grew up in the younger years. And Bill also is a member of the Bowling Hall of Fame, as is his late wife, and his two sons, Tim and John, and I believe one grandchild. So that's definitely a bowling family and very good family, and Bill was just an outstanding, outstanding person. And also condolences to the mayor family on the passing of their mother and grandmother, Joanne. As they said, her husband was calling her. So condolences to both those families as their healing process moves on. Thank you.
All right. And as Paul mentioned, we do have a bridge opening July 1st at noon at the base of the bridge. It will be opened later that day. We don't know which dignitaries will be there, other than the council members, of course. Representative Klawski and Senator Miller, I know, will be there, but the governor and the Department of Transportation and all the state officials have also been invited. So we'll know a little closer to the event. But it's going to be a little more understated than the last one was, but nevertheless, hope you can join us at noon on July 1st and be glad to have that project finished.
What if it rains?
Under the bridge.
Okay. Under the bridge.
It's very welcome under there.
And under the consent agenda, there are three items. Approval of the minutes from June 3rd, and the final adoption of two ordinances, one to rezone the parcel at 602 Mankato Ave, and the other two rezone the parcel at 30 Walnut Street.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Al, and seconded by Michelle. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mayor, I move we adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We adjourn.
She was close, but I beat her.